... attending this evening. This is the first of what will most likely be four town hall meetings or open house conversations to discuss this topic that our school board and myself have been working through over the past year, year and a half, and I'm going to share with you all of those conversations and how we got to where we are today. So, thank you for coming, and the format for this evening will be a presentation from myself, Scott from Gunlock Champion, the general contractor that we've been working with over the past six to eight months, may help facilitate this meeting depending on where the conversation goes, and we'll move forward for twenty or thirty minutes, share with you some of the finer details. I won't get too deep into the weeds on this project, but then we will have a question or a time for question and answers. I believe there are half sheets of paper on your tables. If you have questions, we will read the questions, and if you have comments, you can leave comments on there, but we're not going to address comments this evening. We're just going to deal with questions as the best we can. So, I just, a couple, just logistics here. We're also recording this on YouTube TV for those that can attend, so they can watch this at a later time. So, I am bound by a small area here. So, I'm going to try my best to stay within this area. I usually do better when I'm out from behind the podium, and I have to have the microphone so we can accommodate the technology over to my left. So, we have a couple of things that we have to work within and some confinement issues. So, forgive me if I don't make my way and become more personable. I'm sort of confined to a few feet, so I'll try to stay within this area. But by way of introduction, my name is Jerry Sardina. I'm the superintendent of schools here at Iron Mountain Public Schools, and I will be facilitating these conversations for the next couple of months as we work our way through this and as we work with the community and inform the community. Here tonight, I have for you our current Board of Education. I'm not going to read everything that's on the screen to you. I'm going to use the screen as talking points, but I suggest that you look at some of the bullet points and some of the things that are highlighted on the screen as we go, because I'm certainly not going to read. You can read for yourselves, and I'm not going to insult your intelligence by standing here and reading to you what's on the screen, but it's simply by way of offering talking points to you. So, we have our Board of Education, many of whom are here tonight. They will not be engaging you as a school board. This is not a school board meeting. This is for the community. This is not for them, but certainly they are here in support, and you have access to them, and you can ask them questions and develop relationships with them as we go, especially after the meeting if you choose to do that. So, we have here tonight, I know we have Gino Bazanizzi's in the back, Lisa Bazanizzi's in the back. If you could just raise your hands real quick. Sherri Pacucci-White is here. Am I missing anybody? Oh, Ben DeRitter is here. Anybody else? I think that's it. So, we got four board members currently here, and certainly, again, you can have conversation with them, and they'd be happy to talk with you. Myself, Tracy Williams. Tracy Williams works for OHM. That is the engineering firm that we've been working with over the past several months. Tracy cannot be here tonight. She was on her way here or just leaving. She comes from the copper country, and she headed home instead of Iron Mountain because she fell sick and didn't feel like the trip from copper country to Iron Mountain was a wise idea until she started feeling better. So, she will be here in the future. If you have questions specific to the proposed building project, spaces, square footage, talking points related to what is being offered and programming that's being offered, she will most certainly be the one to discuss engineering details with you in the future, and she'll be here, hopefully, in the future. As I said, this is one of four town hall meetings that we will have. Scott, as I mentioned, Helmanen from Gunlock Champion is here. He's in the front at the single table or by himself here sitting at the table. Ben Reith is our director of non-instructional services. He is here at the tech table along with Marissa Gusert. She's our communications coordinator. You can contact either one of those two individuals if you have questions. If you can't get a hold of me, I usually am. I pride myself in responding back to you within a reasonable amount of time, whether it's phone calls, emails, voicemails, but certainly with something like this, if time is of the essence, if you want to talk to somebody, here are some other options for you to be able to get your questions answered, and so they will make themselves available also. One other person I don't have on the board, and I need to probably apologize to her, is Sarah Baumgartner. She's my administrative assistant and the glue that sort of holds me together. So, when you call the general school number, you will get Sarah, and she can direct you to me, but certainly she is available to you as well, and she'll be able to assist you with any of your needs. Just a quick overview of what we're going to discuss this evening. Of course, there's lots of talking points. We could talk for hours about where this conversation started and how we got to being where we are today, and we could get deep into the weeds on a lot of issues. That's not the intent of this evening. I'll give you a little bit of history about those talking points and conversations with the board, a little bit of history of the current state of education, not only in Iron Mountain, but just in the state of Michigan in general and across our country, because that will hopefully give you some background, and I think it's important and relevant to know how we got here and why we got here and what those conversations and talking points are. Of course, inform the community of where the board stands and the decisions that they've made up until this point, and then an opportunity for you, of course, to engage with us as we move forward. Following the presentation, after about thirty minutes or so, again, we will read any questions that you may have on your, on the cards that you submit, and we will be posting afterwards what those questions are and what those answers are, again, for you who are here and also for those that are online. So, and that'll be a continuous document that you will be able to refer back to and see, and as we get more and more questions over the next four meetings, we'll continue to grow that document. So, if you have a question, it'll be on our school website, and you can scroll through all the questions that were asked, and maybe your question was already asked, and you'll see an answer provided to your question, and you don't need to send another email or ask the same question again, and it could save all of us some time. Yeah. Oh, Marissa set up here is a basket for questions. If you are jotting down your questions, she's going to keep those in the basket here. Go ahead.
We don't want to write it down, so I got quite a few. I just want you to have the option.
Yeah, we're going to ask.
It's going to be okay. If I can write it down, because basically the open meeting text and everything doesn't say I have to write it down.
Right, but we're not, this isn't a board meeting for, so the Roberts.
It's still a community meeting, so you should be able to have the option rather than writing it down. I got questions.
Okay. You'll have an opportunity to ask your questions. All right. So, as I stated, for the past twelve to sixteen months, the school board and myself have been having conversations about the current state of education in Iron Mountain Public Schools. Some of that research has involved in an enrollment study. We hired a gentleman from Michigan State University, a statistician, who did actually two student studies for us, one about a year and a half ago, two years ago, and then one just a couple of months ago, because of course, as we are going for this proposal, they have to have the most recent, as recent as you can possibly make enrollment studies. So, one thing for those of you that know me, you will, you will, you know that I am a very transparent. I'm a person of integrity, so I will, I will say things the way they are, and I will tell you exactly the board's position, my position, and I will do that both for and against, right? So, this is a conversation that we've had for over a year now on enrollment trends, and it's no secret. I've gotten questions already about isn't Iron Mountain losing students and isn't the enrollment declining, and I'd be a fool if I stayed stood in front of you and said, "No, that's not true." Okay? That's true for all school districts in the state of Michigan. I think for one, I think grew somewhere in the copper country. But enrollment trends in the state of Michigan and across our country are declining. That's true for almost all school districts. Now, I will say that our enrollment study has revealed that, and most all of you probably know better than I do, having been in this community longer than myself, there was a point in time where we lost a significant number of students, and for many years thereafter, we lost students. I can tell you over the last four years that our enrollment trend has stabilized, and we are no longer losing students, or if we are, we're not losing students nearly to the rate as we were. For the last three years now, our enrollment trends have stabilized. So, we are not going down nearly as what was projected five or ten years ago, and fortunately, things have stabilized for us. And now, looking into the future, into the next fifteen or twenty years, our enrollment trends tell you that we are still going to need to be a multi-building district. It won't be until fifteen, eighteen, twenty years from now that we could start having the conversation that Norway has had, Stevenson, Kearney, or some of those smaller school districts where they've brought all their children K-12 into one building. Iron Mountain won't be ready for that for many years to come because of the way that our trends indicate that we are going, and I'm going to talk a little bit more to you about how we reverse those trends, right? And that has a direct impact into this project. So, I'll talk a little bit about that later. So, we've talked about enrollment trends and the need, so we know we need multiple buildings, and we can't, we're not at a position where the district is small enough to bring it under one roof. Learning spaces. I get questions like this a lot about learning spaces and what new building projects offer, right? So, as superintendent, my job is to ensure the best that I can that the public school system that I work for continuously improves, right? The state of Michigan uses these words continuous improvement all throughout its legislation, all throughout its mandates, all throughout public school code, anything related to public education. They continuously use the words continuous improvement. If a school district is happy with status quo or not improving, then the school district's going to lose. We're going to lose children. We're going to lose families. Education in 2023, 21st century learning, is rapidly changing, just like our technology world rapidly changes, and if we don't change along with those changes, then we'll lose the game of public education. We will cease to exist. At some point in time, families will choose other school districts to go to who are working towards this continuous improvement. So, it's my job to ensure that there's a vision for the future for Iron Mountain Public Schools. I'd be remiss if I didn't do that, and I think everybody would understand that, and I certainly think the community would expect that from the school board, the people that have been elected to run the school district, to look for ways to always be better. How can we educate kids better today than we did ten years ago, twenty years ago, and thirty years ago? So, when I get the question, well, what's wrong with the way I was educated? And I'll use myself in the example in almost all these examples. I'll date myself and tell you that I grew up in the seventies and eighties, graduated from high school in nineteen eighty-eight. Unfortunately, having consulted for a number of school districts across the state of Michigan and having worked for a number of them, I can tell you that there are a lot of school districts that are happy with status quo. They're educating children the same way today that they educated children ten, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. Unfortunately, those school districts are struggling to keep their doors open, because as I, as I stated, and I will reiterate, public education can't, can't stay in its current state. We have to progress. We have to find ways to meet the current needs of our families. Our families today have different needs, and our children today have different needs than even ten years ago. The mandates from the state on public education today are different than they were ten years ago. I graduated from a school in Milwaukee County with three hundred and ninety-three students in my graduating class. We had one private testing room for special education in a school building of almost two thousand high schoolers. We can't get away with that today. We don't have enough private testing rooms. We offer physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy. We have homeless liaison officers. We have kids that don't have homes, and so we have school success workers. We have, we have needs today in our community that are different than ever before, and so these are services that we provide. Many of these services are mandated by the state that we provide, and so these are people that are employed and services that we offer, and of course, our school buildings have to be equipped to be able to do this, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So, that's a little bit about the trends in education. That's a little bit about learning spaces and what a new building offers you when you have the availability of a, of a new classroom and in a new learning space. Safety and security, of course. All we have to do is read the paper, turn on the news channel to, to know that safety and security amongst our public schools is an incredible, at the top of everybody's priority list of keeping our children safe, right? We, we, we talk about it. We hear about it. I spent a day in Escanaba yesterday talking about crisis management and what to do when children are in crisis, because they come to us in crisis from, from the home life, or what to do when there is a crisis, right, regarding safety and security of our children, and what do your school buildings, how equipped are you to keep the children safe? So, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Trends in shared services. Again, Iron Mountain is, is unique in that we are at a position now where, of course, we've lost enrollment, right, over the years, and so we can no longer have the same number of staff. We can no longer employ the same number of people that we had when we had five hundred more students in our buildings. So, although the students are less in number, the needs today are greater. As I, as I stated before, the needs that are coming to us from the children and the families are greater today than they were in years past. So, how do you accommodate that? What we've been doing, because we can't employ more people, because we can't afford it, is that we share services. So, we take a teacher, and we change a teacher's schedule, so they teach part of the day here, and then they drive up to north, and they teach part of the day up there. North Elementary School currently doesn't have a counselor available to those students. They don't have a school success worker available to those students. They don't have, I shouldn't say they're not available. They're housed here, so when these people leave here to attend to the needs up there, you get the picture, right? Then the needs here are no longer being met, and so we have people sharing services, and because of the way the bell schedule is set, because of the way of the distance and driving, we can't accommodate North Elementary students like we would. If North Elementary students were downtown here across the street, they would have access to more of our shared services. They'd have better access to our school psychologists. They'd have better access to our school social workers, to our resource officers, to our liaison officer, and, and all of these, to our special education teachers, and all of these services that we currently don't provide or can't provide, because the building schedules are such that we can't get people up there. By the time somebody leaves here and drives and gets up there and gets into a classroom and provides services, you lost, you lost twenty minutes, and in the world of education, that's a big deal. So, the availability of having all of our kids in one centralized campus is a big reason why we are considering this, because they will have access to more of the services that they currently don't have access to. And then, of course, we have the location of North, right? It's a decent building, and we'll talk about that, because I get questions about, you know, it's probably the most decent building of the buildings that you have. We'll talk about that a little bit later, so I already know that's probably on somebody's mind in the room. But a reoccurring theme is getting to North is not very appealing to our families. Getting to North is a cause of concern for many of the people that currently send their children to North. I can also tell you that many families of people that I have talked to, that our board has talked to, we lose families, because when people are looking to send their children to an elementary school, where am I going to send my kindergarten? Of course, they're going to go to North, right? And they're going to tour the building, and they're going to drive there, and then they're going to go to Woodland, and then they're going to see what their other options are there. Unfortunately, parents a lot of times don't choose a school based on the things that we as educators would hope they would choose a school for. Relationships, the value of the education, the teaching staff, the size of the class, the curriculum. Most oftentimes, they choose things that appeal to them, aesthetics, the way the building looks, the route that I take to get to my child's elementary school, right? These are the things that they choose, and we know over time, this, I'm not saying anything that's foreign to anybody, but we know if people are going to compare school districts and consider school a choice, that more times than not, they're going to consider this school district that looks better, that seems safer to drive to, that is more appealing and has more curb appeal. So, if we can offer something that combats that, that brings families in, okay? And I'm going to, I'm going to expand this a little bit. Again, the goal of my, my job and the board's job is to continuously improve. We have to find ways not only to improve the state of education in this city, but to improve the city, right? I've talked to Dale when he came to see me, and I told him, "We want people to choose Iron Mountain. We want people to buy our houses. We want people to send their kids to our public school system. We want this school system to grow, to expand. We want to have a growing problem. We want to have a space problem, because we're running out of room," right? One way to do that is to offer an educational program that is different than what anybody else offers, and I say that because we're going to get to that here in a minute. And so, if we can offer a level of programming that they can't get in another school district, that's what appeals to parents, and that's why they choose Iron Mountain Public Schools over another school district. If they can get what they can get here someplace else, they're going to go with what looks nicer and what looks shinier, and they're going to, and they're going to go that route, and we know that just by human nature. So, in the conversations, it started off with what could we do, right? So, we have this, we have this issue. There is no doubt that we need to improve. There is no doubt that we have to do something. We can't continue year after year after year to offer the same level of programming and not offer our kids new curriculum and not offer our kids new technology, not offer our kids new learning spaces and ways to engage with their learning and their teachers. We have to improve. So, what are the options available to a school district? The first option that I've discussed with the board a number of times, consolidation. I'm sure it's on some people's minds here. I can tell you, and you probably already know, that our neighboring district, the day after the news broke that Iron Mountain Public Schools is considering a project like this, what do you think the conversation was with the superintendent and the school board across the tracks? They are considering a project, and I don't know the scope of their project, but they're looking to build a new building and do things in Kingsford as a, as a matter of keeping up with the Joneses and offering new programming and being competitive, right? Because they're in the same boat. We are continuously improving. So, the question comes up often, well, why don't we consolidate? If both districts are going to look at building projects, why don't we just become one district? And I'm sure that's a question that many people probably have, and so it's been talked about. It's been talked about with our board. I've talked about, I've talked with other school board members and other school districts about this topic. We've talked as superintendents. We've included Norway in on this conversation. We've included North Dickinson on this conversation, and it's a conversation that doesn't go very far. Nobody wants to lose their community identity. We all know that the public school system is the heartbeat of any community, and once you lose that identity, once you lose the heartbeat of your community, right, you start losing your community, and that is the resounding theme in all of these conversations, and nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to give up their individuality. Nobody wants to give up who they are. The Knights want to be the Knights forever, right? Flivers, the Mountaineers, and you get the idea. In my experience in working with districts that have considered consolidation, there's always a larger school and a smaller school at the table. A couple of things. Both schools have to come to the table, or three schools if we join with Norway, or whatever. Everybody has to come to the table and offer something. Unfortunately, if we were to consolidate with Kingsford, Iron Mountain in its current state is not coming to the table in offering very much the way it is. There is no way a sales pitch to Kingsford would be, "You want to send your kids," instead of Woodland, "to North Elementary School." It's just not going to fly. There's no way somebody's going to say, "I want to send my high school kid to, instead of Kingsford High School, to our high school." So, we don't have a lot to bring to the table, so that is another talking point, and of course, that's not the talking point against the Mountaineers, right? It's the talking point in the other communities. So, we can't change that perception. We can't change those talking points. That's their perception, perception, and they're bringing that to the table, but they're not going to be willing to send their kids to our buildings in the current shape that our buildings are in. The other thing that happens from our vantage point, when districts consolidate, is that the larger school is always more heavily represented than the smaller school. So, on your boards, on your committees, on, on all of the things that happen within a public school system, the larger school usually is more heavily represented. The smaller school, the smaller school quickly becomes overshadowed, and again, although you're consolidated, you start losing your identity, and we're no longer, we're no longer the kids that came from the, from Iron Mountain. We're no longer the Iron Mountain group, right? We become overshadowed by the bigger dog on the porch. So, those are, those were the talking points and have been the talking points. This is my fourth year here. When I first moved here, I've talked to probably twelve or fifteen people for and against consolidation, and I've been having these conversations for the past four years, and that's just a brief overview. Again, transparency, that's where those conversations go almost every time. And again, I can't control those narratives. Those, those narratives are coming to me by the people I'm having those conversations with. So, consolidation isn't on the table. I don't think any boards would be in favor of it. Communities would not be in favor of it. I think we would come to the table with the majority of the people in favor of it, but it's not going to happen with the other communities agreeing. So, Plan B. Renovations. I get this question a lot. We're all here to learn about and discuss why a building project, so I want to take a few minutes, because I know a lot of you have contacted board members and have talked about, "Why can't we just fix what we currently have and just, and just, it's certainly going to cost less if we just take care of all of our needs and just renovate Central, open that back up, make it the North Elementary School, and just use that building, and stick some of the money into this building, and fix up what needs to be fixed at the high school, and our vacant unused industrial arts building, let's open that back up. It just needs a few touches here and there." So, we explored it. We met with Scott. We met with Tracy from OHM, and we investigated this whole idea of doing all the renovations. I can tell you that although the renovation project, it may come in a little less than what we're proposing for a building project, but it certainly may not. So, I can tell you that. I can tell you that the use of Central, it can't, it can't be done with today's building codes and with today's needs. What would have to happen inside of that building as far as taking down walls, moving walls, making more spaces, that's a traditional old style middle school made up of mostly classrooms and very little space for ancillary offices and rooms and all these other specialized services that we are now offering students, and so the amount of renovation work that would have to go into that building, A, I think Scott would tell you, can't be done, and B, would not be cost effective. And keep in mind... And keep in mind, the school board and myself, we want to present something that we're confident in and we want to present something to the community that we believe in. And we want the community to partner with us. Like, we want your support. We want your vote. We want you to get behind what we're doing. So it'd be foolish for us to present to you something that isn't needed. Like, we could probably renovate, but let's try to get a building project past them. Like, this school board has been excellent in sort of reining me in to make sure that we are presenting something that they feel that the community can get behind. Because we want to partner with you. We want to be in this together. And so we're not going to present pie in the sky and unnecessary costs and expenditures that we know that the community wouldn't support, right? So we're going to present something to you that we're confident in, that we feel good about. Renovations just simply can't be done. And Scott, if we get to that point, can talk to you a little bit in more detail as to why that is. But for now, I'm not the contractor, I'm not the engineer, but I can tell you that these conversations have been had. It has been explored in detail. We drew up plans. We've had a number of meetings. Our school board selected a committee to meet with Scott and Tracy on a number of occasions to explore this. And they laid it out in a way that it just simply would not be possible and certainly not something that would be cost effective. So they certainly didn't support it and then we couldn't support it at the end. So that leaves us with option C. A building project, right? We have three possibilities. So this building project does a number of things. It moves North Elementary School downtown to the current middle school site. It is an additional early childhood center. I'm going to park here for just a couple of minutes. So this is a separate building across from Central Middle School and the vacant parking lot over there and that land that we own over there. And so the early childhood center is based on this idea of a kindergarten academy and a childhood center specifically for children in that daycare, early kindergarten, kindergarten age group, right? The most important developmental years of their educational careers where they have a building unto themselves. We can do, because kindergarten is not a state mandate, we can offer programming that is different than first through 12th grade. We can structure school days that are different than first through 12th grade. We don't have to follow state mandates on hours and days and things like that. So we can schedule a school week differently than we can with the other grade levels. And it's this idea of an academy for just our kindergarteners and our early K kids. They stay with the same teacher for two years. Parents build relationships. And because of a different format, because of a different type of teaching and because of a different schedule, teachers are able to better form relationships with parents. I'm just going to give you a quick example. There's one other kindergarten academy that I know of in the UP and that's in Escanaba. Been there a number of times and have met with their administration and have toured it a number of times. And so it's something that is new on the horizon, right? I talk about continuous improvement in education. So this is something that we are ahead of the curve on. They beat us to the punch. A number of years ago, they closed an elementary building. They reopened it and they made it into this kindergarten academy idea. And it's something that their community, they actually saw an increase in their student enrollment at those younger grade levels because nobody else offers this. And the parents that are sending their kids there love this idea of one teacher for two years at the most important grade levels. They build into their week, Fridays, for example, are days that the teachers can go out and find out who the individuals are and the families are that have two and three-year-olds. So who are the families in our community that are thinking about where they're going to send their kids to early kindergarten next year or in two years? And so those teachers are making those contacts and building those relationships before those children are attending school. And so with a flexible schedule at the early kindergarten and kindergarten levels, it allows those teachers to do that. So they know who those parents are. Those parents are invited into the school. Those parents are a part of the school even before they send their children to the school. Certainly, we're providing services and certainly something, if you can envision yourself as a parent of a kindergartner, something I'm sure you would appreciate and more than likely would choose to send your child to that school as opposed to Gladstone or Bark River or whatever their competitors are. So that's just a little snapshot of what a kindergarten academy does. And again, back to 10 minutes ago when I talked about offering new programming, that is the single most important way of how you reverse your trend of declining enrollment. You offer programming that nobody else offers. Certainly, I would be confident in saying that the people that are currently sending their kids to early kindergarten or kindergarten that aren't quite vested in Kingsford Community Schools because they don't have the years there just yet, would certainly consider sending them to a program such as this. So we could see an increase in our enrollment for that. Secondly, I think we could see an increase in enrollment when they're deciding where to send their early kindergartner or kindergarten to. They see the traditional level of programming across the street and they see a new level of programming unlike any other here. So a couple of different avenues to reverse our trends and to increase the number of families that attend our schools, the number of families that are part of our community, right? The number of families buying our homes and investing their time and resources into our community. The building, so that's the building project, right? So we've combined, we've morphed the renovation project with the building project in this proposal. So first through sixth grade building where Central Middle School is and a early childhood center across the street. And then Iron Mountain Public Schools, as I'm sure you probably know because you've been in our buildings and you've seen our facilities, is in desperate need of some serious upgrades to a lot of its mechanicals, roofing systems, boiler systems, HVAC systems. Our facility is down at the football field is in serious need of repairs and upgrades. We have a vacant industrial arts building that is in serious need if we want to open that building of repairs. Some of our heating and HVAC systems, for example, in this building, are systems that are no longer being manufactured. So when we have heating problems, which is often, we have to consult a company from out of state who has to manufacture our part and we have to wait months on end for those parts to get here because they're building them new because they no longer manufacture them. And they can set the price at whatever they want. And so they have us over a barrel and so we're combating we're combating things such as that when it comes to our mechanicals and when it comes to the need. Iron Mountain Public Schools, over the course of a number of years, a long time, for the last 10 or 20 years, has been sticking its resources as much as possible into our buildings. And as you know, we have relatively old buildings and so they stick those financial resources into keeping those buildings running at the sacrifice of sticking those resources into education, right? So when you pay for diesel fuel for the bus or when you pay for $50,000 to keep the heating on during the winter months because parts continue to fail, that's money that we're pouring into the buildings to keep the buildings open. So we avoid what our neighbors down in Menominee experienced this year, right? So they experienced a number of building malfunctions and failures through a renovation project, through failed systems, through systems that weren't upgraded and taken care of. And their district hasn't been in school for most of the school year. They just went back to school a couple of weeks ago, so they've been virtual for most of the school year, right? So Iron Mountain has had the foresight to keep the buildings open in the best running condition, again, at the sacrifice of pouring that money into education and into the classroom, which as educators will tell you, that's where we need to focus our resources as best we can. So the project also includes renovation to this building, as I mentioned, HVAC systems. We'll get into the weeds here a little bit. And so what does this do? I talked a little bit about the one campus for all K-12 students. And what that one campus does is allow us to better utilize the resources that we have. You can see all of the different services, not all of them, but to give an example, just a few examples of what those services are. New learning spaces, we talked about what that does. Sensory rooms, which we currently don't have that we are in desperate need of, especially at the younger grade levels. Private testing rooms, certainly not enough of those. We have psych and social therapists and we have these people in our building that don't have a place. They don't have a room to meet with their students. They don't have a room to meet with their parents. There is no privacy. So we ask them currently to displace other people. An ancillary staff person may ask a teacher on a prep hour, "Can I use your classroom? I need to work with this family or this student." And so we displace that teacher and it's hard to do it, right? It's hard to ask a teacher to leave their classroom during their prep hour so we can use it for a different purpose. But we make do with what we have. Again, going to the fact that we have needs today that we haven't seen in years past. So these people don't have their own spaces. We have people on a cart. We have psych on a cart. We have social workers on a cart and they're just mobile. And they just kind of find an open space wherever we can accommodate them or wherever the teachers and the staff can accommodate them. And it's not conducive to learning. It's not conducive to building relationships with parents. You can put yourself in that situation. If you come into the building with your child that's in need of services and we're stumbling trying to find a place for you to help you feel important, to help you feel like your child is receiving the level of service that they need and we can't find a space for you, right? And we all can envision what that conversation looks like and the frustration for everybody, including the school. One campus. If we eliminate a campus up there, we're gaining a campus here, but in essence, we are reducing the number of lots that we have to cut grass on. We're reducing the number of times we have to salt and plow, the number of parking lots we have to plow. So there is cost savings in services. Bussing service, we're certainly transporting kids less miles and less hours on the road, minutes. So we could bill according to minutes and miles. Those numbers would come down, so there would be cost savings there. Parents. So once the news broke, I can tell you that parents that are invested in our school district and are sending their kids to our school district absolutely love the idea of having one campus because now again, they have access and easier access to all of our services that they don't have when we have separate campuses. They love the idea of being able to see their teachers, being able to build those relationships just at an easier level than our current situation. And that, of course, would increase parent participation, which is what schools absolutely love to hear. We love to see the parents in the buildings and engaging with us and engaging with their kids in the learning process. This is just a rendering of the early childhood center. So this is the building. I don't know if I have a pointer on here. Center button? You see that? I know you guys, I'm kind of. So this building here is the one that would sit across the street in the vacant lot. A single-story building. It would have its own playground. Before you ask questions about like direction of traffic flow, we're not there yet, right? So we're not there with, you know, which is a one-way street and how our bus is going to do drop off. We're not at that level of conversation yet. This is just simply a rendering of what the building could look like. And this would be the early childhood center. And then you can see the side view of what the first through sixth grade building would be here. I get a lot of questions, believe it or not, about the crosswalk over the street. A lot of people are concerned that we would lose that for whatever reason. But I have lots of questions about the crosswalk. You can see that the crosswalk is still a part of the project. So the early childhood center is a 12,600 square foot building. It includes pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And it prepares the childhood students in the developmental years in its own unique learning environments. And I'm not going to go any further into the weeds on what that looks like. I talked real briefly about that. This is another view of the first through sixth grade building. Again, this building would have its own playground as well. The new elementary school is a 31,400 square foot building to house grades one through six. For those of you who don't know, currently fifth and sixth grade are East Elementary School, always known as East Elementary School, resides in our 512 building. So we have our elementary kids with middle school and high school kids. Certainly not the best model for learning, not where fifth and sixth graders belong. So with the building project proposed, we would move fifth and sixth grade into the elementary building where fifth and sixth grade belongs. And this could truly be a true sixth through 12th grade middle and high school, which is in education, speaking in educational terms, is the best model. First through sixth grade in elementary, seventh through 12th middle and high school. We talked about shared services and we talked about Secures a downtown campus for all our students. These are just some pictures of what new learning spaces look like in the schools. Of course, if you go into our classrooms now, we have desks in rows, right? And we've all been, if the last time you were in a school classroom was the last time you were in a school classroom, it's hard to educate kids like that today. Desk in rows with a teacher up front. When I was in school, again, using myself as the example, I sat in a chair, I faced forward, right? We didn't talk. There was no engagement. The only engagement I was asked to have is maybe take some notes and I listened to a teacher lecture and that was the end of the class period. We don't educate kids like that anymore. I tell my teachers all the time, "If your desks are in rows and you're standing up front, sage on the stage, and you're lecturing for 45 minutes and your kids are not engaged in their learning and they're not critical thinking and they're not collaborating and they're not working with their partners and they're not building and doing projects and getting up and moving about and engaging with their learning, then you're doing it wrong." Unfortunately, it's hard to do those things given the current state of things in our classrooms. We don't have the technology and the capabilities to move classrooms and change shapes of classrooms and do collaborative work just because we just simply don't have the resources for it at the time. But these are actually from Tracy from OHM and some of the projects that they've done in some of the newer classrooms that they have built. High school, they would see some renovations. Again, addressing some current needs. A boardroom, so moving the fifth and sixth grade out of that building gives us some square footage to address current needs. Some of those needs are testing rooms that we don't have room for, ancillary service offices in that fifth and sixth grade wing. Replacing, you can see some of the renovations, the floors, the ceilings, the paint, the light, the electrical, HVAC update in that building, a boardroom, a student center. We have more and more kids today online, taking online classes, college classes virtually than we've ever had before. When I got into education 16 years ago, there wasn't virtual learning. Two years ago, in, two years ago, I can't remember. A few years ago, Iron Mountain had about 50 kids maybe taking 100 online classes. I don't know Laura exactly how many kids, but we have hundreds of kids taking hundreds of online classes today. So where do those kids go? Because they're not in a classroom, they're taking a college class virtually. So they're online, they're on Blackboard, they're doing their thing. They don't go to a classroom. So where do they go? We don't have a space for them. So this allows us to build a student center where they can go. And these are typically upperclassmen where they can do their college classes and their virtual classes online and we have a space for them to be able to do that. The virtual world is exploding and more and more kids are taking college classes online during the high school day to try to graduate with an associate's degree. And we have programs for them to be able to do that, all on the school's dime. But we need a place for them to go where they can have privacy and they can engage with their virtual teachers and do those sorts of things. So again, continuously improving. You can see through my examples how education is always evolving and we're addressing needs today that we never even thought of years ago. The Izzo Center. This building is in desperate need. I've talked about the HVAC system, roof replacement, man room upgrades, flooring. I know when you come in, you can see the tile work that needs to be replaced. The HVAC system, this is the building that has an HVAC system that currently isn't being manufactured and needs to be replaced. Our gym is operating at about 50% efficiency because two of the four blowers, they're not operational, they're not even able to be fixed. So we have a lot of needs for the Izzo building that we need to address. Central Edition. If we were going to bring one central campus downtown, we then would take our gym at Central and it would become another usable gym. Right now, we cannot use that gym. The bleachers cannot be used because they're old. Parts aren't manufactured for that style of bleacher. They're not safe, so we can't. We can open up maybe a row or two, but that's about it. The gym floor, completely unsafe to use. And so that would need to be replaced and a number of things at the Central Edition that we would then start using on a daily basis that we would need to have to address. that we would then start using on a daily basis that we would need to have to address. Lastly, the Industrial Arts Building, so, this is a vacant building that we would look at renovating and open up and use. One of, I'm going to touch just briefly on another level of programming that we don't have in our area. And this is a cognitively impaired classroom. So, we have a high need for cognitively impaired students. They have been identified, they've been tested, and they've been labeled as cognitively impaired students. And so, where do you educate those students? Because they can't be educated in a regular classroom and we don't have a place for them. These students are not students that are going to graduate with a high school diploma. These are students that need to learn basic life skills. Renovating the Industrial Arts Building in that plan is to be able to offer a cognitively impaired classroom that is a lab and classroom in one room. So, it's a classroom as your traditional classrooms look, but it also is a lab that has a stove and a refrigerator and a washer and a dryer. And it might have a little kitchenette. And we're teaching these students how to take care of themselves, how to wash clothes, how to make basic meals, right? We're teaching them life skills. A program like that doesn't exist in our area. Norway had one, they closed it. And now, there is a cry for parents in Dickinson County, where do we send our children that have these needs? I would be the first to say, we'll take your children, we'll educate them, right? Increase student enrollment, bringing people into our community, having them choose Iron Mountain. So, another reason for people to choose Iron Mountain. Always looking to continuously improve and offer something that somebody else isn't offering. And then, modifying the existing storage space. Of course, we would have all your mechanicals, right? Your snow blowers and your lawnmowers and all these things that need storage space. And we would be bringing everything under one roof as far as all of the records. So, there'd be a records room. And then, another level of programming that you're not going to find anywhere in Dickinson, Iron County, I don't even know if you'll find it in like tri-county area, is the ability to have a digital media center. So, I get a lot of questions about the wood shop. Like, why don't we open the wood shop? And why don't we go back to having kids make end tables and some of those basic level woodworking things? A couple of things on that front. There's not a high demand any longer for kids that have the skills to be able to do that, right? In today's day and age, our industries are looking for kids that can use laser engravers and CNC machines and welding machines and TIG welders. And so, this is the demand that our industries in the area are asking our kids to have the skills for. And we have the tech center that provides most of those skills. So, we cannot compete against the tech center and offer a programming that would directly compete against them or that they're already offering. But, what we can do, because it's the 21st century and kids love technology and companies and manufacturers and employers love kids that know how to handle technology, is we can offer a digital media center that teaches them how to use technology, today's technology. We've received from a family in Iron Mountain, a sizable donation to equip this room. So, all of the equipment for this room has already been donated. And again, it's another level of programming that you can't find in any other school in our area. There aren't any digital media centers, there aren't any schools in our area that are teaching kids how to do certain levels of digital media, photo editing, video editing, and creating these Mac libraries and different virtual sandboxes and virtual reality classrooms. And this is all of today's education. And we have the ability to offer that if we had a space for them. So, this addresses yet. So, you've heard me now three or four times tell you how this project gives us the possibility of offering levels of programming, making Iron Mountain schools better than any other school district, right? Which is something I think we can all get behind and be proud of. So, here's the total bond proposal amount to complete this job. I can tell you that working with Scott and Tracy, these are numbers that the board is agonized over for a long period of time. This is where we have come in and settled on. And it's an estimated millage increase of 2.45 mils. I'm sure most everybody is interested in the financial aspect of this. So, I'll talk briefly about the financial aspect of it. Today's millage rate, in eight years, as old debt comes off, as I'm sure all of you know, there was a bond passed, eventually passed 10, 12 years ago in the city of Iron Mountain. As that debt falls off, in eight years, in eight years, the millage rate will be very close to what it currently is today. And I get that question a lot. So, how many years am I going to have to pay this increase? Is it going to be 30 years, is it going to be 20 years? Well, it's actually going to be about eight years. Because in eight years, the millage rate will drop as the old debt falls off to very close to what we're paying today. So, when you look at it sort of in that direction, it's not a 20-year, it's not a 20-year increase. You won't see the increases for 30 years. You'll see the increases for about eight years. And then, that millage rate will come down substantially as the old debt falls off. This is just a brief example of what you can expect. We have on our school website a tax calculator, and I'll talk briefly about the tax calculator because there's a couple of important things. When you go into the tax calculator, it'll ask you to put in the taxable value of your home, not the actual value of your home, so pay attention to that. The taxable value of your home, so, in the first scenario, we have a value of a home at $75,000. The taxable value is $37,500. And it'll calculate the annual cost of $105 and the monthly cost of $8.81. Now, this scenario assumes an annual income of $100,000, okay? So, for this example, for the $75,000 example, that's worst-case scenario. The tax calculator will also ask you what your annual income is. So, if you're on a fixed income, if you're a senior citizen, there are tax credits available to you. So, your annual cost will come down if those things pertain to you. I believe the threshold is somewhere, don't quote me, I believe the threshold is somewhere around $65,000 or $66,000. If your annual household income is below that, then there's tax credits available to you. If you're over that, then there isn't those tax credits available to you. And so, you can see some of the examples. And these are averages given numbers in our area. So, for a little over $100, $105 a year, if you have a $75,000 home, or $282 for the year, or $23 a month if you have a $200,000 home. So, please visit that website and punch in your numbers. But, again, if you leave the annual income blank, it'll automatically fill in $100,000 of annual income. So, it just assumes worst-case scenario if you don't fill in the numbers. This is sample ballot language, I think it is in your flyers, it's in your programs. So, I'm not going to take the time to read this to you. But, I suggest you do to just verify everything that I have told you this evening. And then, just contact information. And I ask a couple of things. The reason I put this up there is please call. Please, as you're considering this and you have questions, please do not let Iron Mountain Facebook Gossip and Rumor Page to be your guide. Please do not allow any comments in the newspaper to be your guide, right? People write things based upon their feelings and how they feel about a particular issue. And human nature is to not paint an accurate story, right? If I want something to go in a particular way, I'm going to give you the things that I think you need to hear in order to get you on my side. So, I ask that you take a little bit of time, call the school, call myself, call a board member. I'm sure all of you know all of our board members. Talk to Scott, ask for his number, ask for Tracy's number. Spend a little bit of time doing some homework. And instead of listening to what your neighbor is telling you, I got a call today, I'm thankful for the lady that called. She had saw something on Facebook, of course. And the post was that the school district is asking hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of dollars from all of the taxpayers, and how foolish is this? And it just simply is not the truth. So, I implore you to please contact us so you can get the details of the decisions that you're trying to make and get the answers from the school district rather than those other avenues that sometimes influence our decisions. So, with that, if you have a comment card, I'm sure I'm not going to be able to get to all of the comment cards. I will get to some of them, we'll set some time aside to get to some of the comment cards and we'll have this discussion. So, go ahead and do that. Go, yeah, pardon me, go ahead. Yeah, I'll take the comment card.
It's important that we use the comment cards because we need to rephrase the question so the webinar can hear everyone that's listening online. If somebody does ask, you can always rephrase the question.
Okay. And we need these in writing because, of course, we're not going to remember what the questions were. We're going to take your questions and we're going to post them online. So, if you feel your question's important and you want it to be for others to see, then we need, we need the cards. Go ahead. Yeah, you have to have the mic. You have to have the mic. You have to have the mic. Because we're recording and they'll never hear it online. Pick your best one. Because I know we've got others that we want to get to.
Okay, yeah, I'm only going to do a couple. Okay, the first question is, you got over, you got $2.66 million in ARPA funds? Maybe you can answer where that money went to? Because that might have went to putting in your duck work in here and that kind of stuff? That was just one, you want me to keep going?
Okay, nope, I can only do one at a time. All right, so, the question was, of course, one of the silver linings of COVID, I guess, was federal money that has been donated to the schools. And so, what is the school district doing with federal dollars? And is the school district investing that money into some of the things that we talked about? And the answer to that is yes. Last night at our board meeting, our school board just approved a $250,000 to $280,000 project down at the football stadium. They just approved more curriculum purchases, additional curriculum. We just purchased math, K-12 math, K-12 reading to the tune of about $300,000. And we purchased social studies this year. And these are curriculums that are 25, 26, 30 years old. So, desperate need of new curriculum in our district. The wall, the great yellow wall down at the football stadium, the board approved the continuation of that project. I learned that that wall was built in 1906 or 1908. It hasn't been attended to really since then and is literally disintegrating. We tried to paint it and we tried to clean it. But, of course, as soon as you put a power washer on it or a sandblaster, it just disintegrates the cement. So, the school district has stuck about $70,000 into the wall. And we have about another $70,000 to $80,000 to complete that project. The lighting project I spoke of, and then, the approval of the fieldhouse. Number of electrical issues, a number of plumbing issues that haven't been addressed. The concession stand has been approved. So, to answer your question, we are sticking in a large amount of money into the projects that we feel that we can tackle on our own.
Okay, the other thing is the millage. So, you, we owe the millage, you owe, right now, huh? Oh, you owe $6,785,000 on the existing millage, right? Plus another $983 in interest. So, you're asking for 2.45 mils now? But, you're, we're getting, we got four mils that we're paying on this existing debt, right? So, you say that falls off, but it really doesn't fall off, it just goes forward. So, in eight years, we're still going to be paying 6 point, what is it? 6.2, 6.45 mils? So, that'll be for the next 25 years, right? So, okay, so, that does fall off. All right, so, our millage after 2031 is going to go to 2.45 mils and that's it. The four mils is going to drop away. Is that what you're saying?
Okay, so, when I referenced this earlier, we're currently at four mils. In eight years, we'll be back at four mils. It's, I think in eight years, it's four, don't quote me, but it's like four point something. It's a little higher than the four. When the old debt falls off, we jump up to six and a quarter, right? For the eight years. But, then, as the debt falls off, it drops back down to 4.7, 4.6 in year eight, and then, 4.3 in year nine, and then, we're back to four mils. So, it's
So, really, it is going to be 2.45 mils? It's going to be at least four mils or greater after eight years?
Four mils or less, which is where we are at today.
Not adding in the 2.45 mils?
Right. It'll be 6.45 for eight years and then drop back down to four, which is where we are at today. We're currently asking for four today. Can we get to some others? No, we can't, we can't. Can we get to some other questions, please? Thank you. Okay, forgive me for trying to read the handwriting, not always the best at that. Was serious or any consideration given to an incremental approach to the project, I think, is the question? And yes, as I explained when we went through the consolidation versus renovation to building project, it's, the answer is yes, we've had those conversations. What I didn't get into is that in years past, 10 or 12 years ago, the district went to the community and asked for a millage. And I think it failed a couple of times. And then, eventually, it passed. And the passing of the millage was not, the new building project was taken off the table and all they could do at that point was renovate. And then, they renovated, they just picked the highlighted areas that they could renovate. So, we learned a lot since that decision was made. And so, we took that money and we stuck it into the 512 building. And although it did some nice things to the 512 building and got us some new classrooms and some new science rooms and things like that, it didn't really address the ultimate needs that that building has. So, we are still paying for that decision back then. And that decision being, the cost of renovating usually costs more than the cost of building new, which was a conversation that repeated itself during the last 12 or 16 months. So, we did those renovations and it put a Band-Aid on things, but it didn't address the real needs in that building because those other needs exceeded the cost of what the renovation project was able to do. And we're still paying for that today, we still have the same problems today. Had that building been a new building, we wouldn't be having this conversation. If we go back to piecemealing this and doing this over a period of time and doing renovations, we're going to continue to have this conversation for years to come. A new building, the contractors will tell you, will get you 20-plus, closer to 30 years of not having to have these conversations where we have to go back to the community and ask for money. Because the school's really, and something I didn't get into, we can generate revenue one of two ways. State funding and taxpayer dollars, that's our only options. We know that the state of education in Michigan has been underfunded severely for decades. And so, we really don't have that as an option. We can't ask for more state funding, the number is what the number is. Did you want to ask a question? Yeah, I, you're going to need the microphone. Yeah, you do.
Okay, the first question I have is, what happens to the children's museum that has made significant investment in that building already? They have a 10-year lease, I'm just curious what happens there?
Right now, we have all intention to keep the children's museum exactly where it is. And again, thank you for bringing it up. Another plug for bringing the elementary kids down here because now, we can access it a lot easier and we can get better use out of the children's museum with our kindergarten through fourth graders, which they already are talking about.
My second question is, what plans are there for the North Elementary School as it exists? Sell it?
Thank you. And so, of course, I don't have a crystal ball, but the plans would be to sell North Elementary School. We have had conversations since the news broke that the district is looking at this project that there would be investors looking to purchase that property. So, those conversations have happened over the months.
Okay, the other thing that I have to say about consolidation is that I worked and lived in a unified school district in Kenosha County and Racine County. They, each school kept its own identity, its own teams and its own principal. The only thing that was unified was the superintendent's office and all of the administrative activities for the entire county.
Okay, and that also was discussed, but that in our situation with Kingsford doesn't solve the problems that we needed to solve. Any other questions? Go ahead, you're gonna need the microphone. Unless you submitted a card. You did? Alright, let me, hang on. If passed, what is the timeline of the building project? Three years? Three years is the answer to that. Starting. Spring of 2024. Okay. How long, okay, how long until students are attending class in the new building? Sounds like spring of, sounds like three years after the spring of, the fall, most likely. So it'll start, the project will start in the spring of 2024. Three years later, that fall. Parking question, go ahead, I'll just repeat it. So yes, what you didn't see on those, on the renderings was that where the early childhood center is, there's two additional parking lots. Space for two additional parking lots over there to accommodate for teacher parking, visitor parking. To help alleviate some of the issues that we know we have around this building. If passed, what is going to stop Kingsford from keeping up with the Joneses and doing something similar and undermining this project? I've had this question a number of times. Again, transparency, there's nothing stopping them from doing that. Certainly, it's within their preview to do that. It's better to be the frontrunner, right? The trailblazer in, in the program than it is to be, to, to react to what somebody else is doing. It's always better to be proactive and be the, the initial frontrunner on those types of projects. Than it is to be reactive and, and come back after the fact. And two or three years later, if they want to build a similar project, it'll take them a similar amount of time. And two or three years later, say, well, we're also doing that too now, so come back to us. Once we get the people in the door, they're gonna stick with our school district. Again, going back to the conversation I had with why people choose school districts and why they move. Once you get them in the door, typically they stick with your program if you're, if you're offering a level of service that they're pleased with. Go ahead. Well, we, we get the ones in the doors at the EK and the K levels. We're not gonna get high school kids in the door because we offer an early childhood center. But the kids that we want to get in the door, the most important grade levels are those EK and K kids. Because once you get them in the door and they become a mountaineer, they're years for the next 12 or 13 years, right? So I can tell you in having conversations with people on their school board and their superintendent. What they're considering is not anything like what we're considering. They're considering expanding Woodland and offering different elementary classrooms. Because they've, they are trying to compete with us in our class sizes. Being a smaller school district, we of course can offer small class sizes, which a lot of our families love. It's a reason why they choose to Iron Mountain. Because when I have 21 kids in a classroom, I can form relationships with that student. I can give your child more attention than if I have 31 kids in my elementary classroom. And so we pride ourselves on that fact. They try very, very hard to compete with that. So they try to keep their class sizes low. Now, I'm, I'm gonna fill you in on a little secret and I don't know any ties to anybody in the room or Kingsford. But they have the room in Woodland Elementary School to fit the number of children they have in that building. But because they refuse to increase their class sizes so they can compete with us and have that same marketing point of small class sizes. They're, they, they will say that they're out of room. But they, they could put more children in their classrooms. So that, they're looking at expanding classrooms at Woodland. And they do have some needs, they had, they do have some growing needs. They do have some office needs and some ancillary staff needs, just as we do. Again, they're battling the same, the same change in education that we are, right? Offering services that we didn't have to offer years ago. They're battling some of those same topics, so they need spaces for their, their people as well. So they do have some needs. I'm just obviously biased towards Iron Mountain and believe our needs are greater at this point in time and that's why the urgency here. Go ahead. No, so, pardon me, oh, I'm sorry. So the question is, for those online, is how, how the project gets funded or how the early childhood center gets funded? And going back to my previous comments, we have two revenue streams. We have state funding and we have taxpayer dollars. So it's, it's a combination of those two. We get state funding based on a number of pupils that we have in the classroom. Yeah. We get funded. We get funded for pre-k. I think we did that one. And I would take, I, I would argue with and push back a little bit about kindergarten and early kindergarten being a glorified daycare. Because we have exceptional teachers in those buildings doing exceptional work with those kids. And the level of instruction is, so I'm an educator at heart, so I'm definitely gonna, I'm gonna advocate for the level of instruction that occurs in a building is, is top notch. And I couldn't speak highly enough about our EK and K teachers in building those relationships at those important years. So daycare, I don't think you're gonna get that as much. If this passes, have you considered adding childcare to the early education center? Yes, the, the quick answer is yes. That is one topic that we just, we, we would love to be able to put it over there. I'm just not certain that we can, given the size of the building that we proposed. Again, trying to propose something that meets the needs immediately. And not proposing something that is exorbitant or above and beyond and built on dreams and what ifs, right? So we are proposing something that is an immediate need. We did build in some square footage for some growth, right? That, you heard my entire presentation, we're hoping to increase the number of kids that attend Iron Mountain schools. So we would be foolish to build a classroom that only fits today's need. If the intent of this whole thing is to increase the number of kids in our classroom. So we did build in some room for growth. And, and we're just not certain right now. It's, it's on the to, it's on the docket for discussion. I just can't give you a hard, fast, I mean, we would love it if we could do it. But it just may, may not be possible without having to build a bigger building and ask for even more money. But it would be great if we could put that whole complex, daycare, EK and K. Whoever asked that question, that, that is a good question and something certainly we would love to do.
You're not going to have a state mortgage on the academy, whatever you want to call it, the campus. Is because the state is not going to go along with all of the things that the school board wants. They want so many things encompassed in all of this that isn't necessary. And, and so as a result, you're gonna pay it through a millage and you will get everything that the school board wants.
This isn't public comment, this isn't, give your opinion. This is time for questions, thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's a comment. So I said I would not discuss comments. If you, if you don't have money for resources. Now, how will you get quality teachers for programs you're talking about? I don't understand that question. So currently, we have the resources, we have the teachers, we have the personnel. We just, we just can't get them access to our kids in the same way that we could if we had one campus. Now, certainly, if we grow and we add students to the classroom and we need to add more classrooms. Well, now you're increasing your revenue stream, which would make it possible to hire more people and get, get, fulfill the need by, by postings and, and hiring teachers. So once, once the additional kids come in, the revenue goes up, we can hire new teachers. But if everything stays status quo, we have the resources in place, we just can't get access to our current resources, to our current level of kids. Alright. Up and down with the glasses here. Will there be a specific parking lot for staffing students? I think we addressed that as opposed to street parking. I don't know, if this was, was this your? Okay, so we addressed those questions. Very good. Another question regarding the debt. And so very similar to the conversation we just had over here. Okay. Okay, so we, I don't know if you have a better way to explain this regarding the mils and the increase and then eventually fall off of debt. I'll give you, can I give you the mic?
Dale, hopefully this helps. So you're, you're currently paying four mils. You're currently paying four mils right now for the school bond from 2013, I believe that was it. So for six or eight years, rather, it's gonna go up by 2.45 mils. So it'd be a total of 6.45 mils. And in eight years, it'll go back down to 4.6, nine years, 4.4, and then down to four after that. So what, what he's saying that you are, you'll be back to where you're at is you'll be at the same millage rate today in eight years. If that makes sense. For 17 years, you'll pay that same, that same four mils that you're currently paying right now. Yes. Yeah, the bond language though is, is telling you that it's a net increase. So for, for the next eight years, you will pay a net increase on your millage of 2.45 mils.
Okay, and again, two revenue streams, right? So if we're not collecting any millage, the, the, the school district won't exist, right? We only have state revenue and, and taxpayer dollars. So I, I don't know that collecting mils is, I mean, it's just something the school district has to do in order to exist. Okay, so a good question. I've had several of these types of phone calls. How many communities do you know of that are considering building projects, sinking funds, millage increases? So I can tell you that, of course, Norway has, has done their thing. We talked about Kingsford, I think Florence, Niagara, they have all gone through similar building projects, renovation projects. Menominee currently is going through a renovation project. I think Stevenson may have downsized because they used to work there and they closed an elementary building and did renovations too. And so they increased mils. School districts, again, this goes back to the conversation that schools have to continuously improve and we can't stay with the status quo, right? The only way to do that is to renovate, to build new, to offer more programs. And the only way to do that is by asking taxpayers to continuously fund the public school that they, they've chose to, in the district that they've chose to live in. And our state tax dollars. So I, I think, and I, I can't give you every single school district in our area. But in our immediate area, I know West Iron County, I don't know where they are with theirs. But they're building new administration buildings, new ancillary offices, new, I think, elementary classrooms. So that proposal's out there somewhere, I don't know where they are in their project. So that's six or seven in our immediate area that I know have, have. And, and to be honest with you, you can, you can Google, you can go on the state website. You can find the hundreds of school districts that are going through referendums for one reason or another. Because it's what schools have to do to continue to educate children. I'm just reading through comments as opposed to questions. Comments are about the consolidation. It's the adults in the room that are the problem, not the kids, things like this. So this is a question about asbestos, asbestos removal. So again, the age of that building, there's a number of, of just toxins in that building, including asbestos that would have to be abated. So the, the project, the, the teardown project for that building, I can't remember off the top of my head. But is about $600,000 of the total cost of the project. So that, that's what I can tell you. Every project that I discussed this evening is a project listed on our application with state treasury. And the, the demolition of a school building is listed as a separate project. And so that project costs, in the overall grand scheme of things, about $600,000 to clear that site before we can build on it. East Elementary, why cannot, why can we not use East Elementary School? It was recently remodeled. I don't know about a recent remodel at East Elementary School, I'm not aware of that. But East Elementary School is being used. And I know this came up, I think even in the newspaper and some phone calls generated. So East Elementary School, up on the hill, is, currently houses our Iron Mountain-Kingsford Community Schools. So Julie Wonders, if you know the name Julie Wonders, is the director of Iron Mountain-Kingsford Community Schools. And out of that building, we have alternative education. So all of the kids in Iron Mountain, Kingsford, and I even believe we have kids from Norway Forest Park, West Iron County that we've accepted. Again, offering a level of programming that nobody else offers. So these kids that can't, can't be educated in the traditional classroom setting that need an alternative educational setting. They go to East Elementary School. These kids are in person, they're in the building, they're in the classrooms, we have teachers. Mr. Jane, I believe, is, is one of those people that educates those kids. And a lot of them are online, so that building is being used for that. That building is also used, half of their, third of the building is being used to house our homeschool partnership. So we have roughly 80 families that homeschool their children. But they use our facilities because although they're virtual and online students, they come into the building several times a week. Typically on Thursdays, we've set Thursdays aside, but the, the program is expanding, again, offering services that nobody else does. Take that back, Kingsford does offer it, but ours is expanding beyond what they have because of the type of programming we have. And so they house that as well. And those students come into the building several days out of the week for their hands-on electives and their hands-on instruction. And to build the relationships and to get the social aspect of schooling because most of their schooling is done through homeschool. Julie also oversees our, our enrichment programs in the summer and all of the, a lot of our sporting events in the summer and a lot of the community events, daycare. So that building is max capacity, that building is being utilized in every way, shape and form, and probably beyond its potential. So contrary to what you may have read or heard, East Elementary is staffed, it is full. And we have a very good program operating out of there that we're proud of. Did every board member vote in? Did every board member vote in favor of this project? The answer is yes. Why not offer to renovate the industrial arts building to something more productive outside of larger projects? I, I, I don't understand. So, if I understand the question correctly, it's why not renovate the industrial arts building, other than what we are renovating it for, renovated in more purposeful, more useful spaces? I don't know if, considering the needs that we're trying to accomplish, that industrial arts building wouldn't be able to accomplish all of those needs? Unless you're, unless you're, unless, I guess I'm struggling to understand a little bit, unless you're saying maybe do some things in the industrial arts building now and then do some things later and, and continue to add on to the building? Just, just the industrial arts building? So, the industrial arts building is, it's addressing the cognitively impaired classroom? That's about the only educational need that it's addressing. The rest of that building would be used as a shipping and receiving room, right? Because now we have a K-12 campus, so now all of our equipment has to come to one location. All of the shipping, receiving, the food service, all of those things, so we need a shipping, receiving room, so the only space, actually, I, I correct myself, the digital media center that we talked about would be housed in there and the cognitively impaired classroom. So, it serves two new programming levels, but then the rest of the building is dedicated to ancillary services and, and that type of work. Okay, good question here, would the students from the two new buildings be going to the central cafeteria? For sure, the first through sixth grade building, yes. And the board and I just had this conversation last night about the early childhood center as to the we, and, and again, we haven't gone down into the level of conversation of how the spaces exactly are going to be designed, right? So, I can't answer this question emphatically. But, the two options on the table are to either bring the kids over to the central cafeteria like everybody else in the district or bring the food to them and thus need some space for some sort of workable kitchen. We are, we are having those conversations, a decision hasn't been met, and Scott has something.
I was just gonna say, we did program space in there for a multi-purpose in the EK building, so it, it does have that flexibility to do that.
So, we can keep those little kids just on their own campus with their playground, no need to leave that facility during the day. Is it large enough to accommodate all of them? Yes, and room for growth? Do the new buildings have lunchrooms and a kitchen? I think all part of the same conversation, we would utilize our main kitchen that we have here for the entire campus. This is a question about fifth and sixth grade being in the building and, and moving them once again. They've already moved once, we moved them into this building and now we're looking to move them out of the building. And the only reason, that serves a couple purposes, one purpose is i- if this, if the community approves this, we can get them in the building that they belong in, which is good for all things educationally speaking. And then, the second purpose that that serves is that it frees up space to be able to address the needs that I've spoken about this evening that we currently don't address. It addresses those people that don't have office space, don't have private rooms, it addresses the people that are on carts and displacing. So, it, it frees up space in that building because we're out of space in that building to be able to utilize those spaces in, in better ways, and so it serves a number of different needs. And, and we felt, the board and myself felt that that would be the best approach and that is a, a win-win for the district if we can both do something that's solid, educationally speaking, as well as do something solid as far as the services and the programs that we offer. Do you still have to barricade the street off, I'm assuming this is regards to busing? And so, at the beginning of my presentation, if you remember back an hour and a half ago already, I had mentioned that there are some conversations that are on the docket to have. The flow of traffic, we, we certainly know that that is a talking point and we want to keep our kids safe. Currently, we have kids walking across the street, kids come to the band room, kids come in here for lunch, right? Kids, kids use the weight room in PE class and health class, and so then they're going over for cafeteria, they're going over for lunch. And so, we got kids all over the place crossing the street and, and certainly, safety and security is on the forefront of everybody's minds. So, that conversation as far as traffic flow, one-way streets, what's the safest? What is the safest, a parking lot, a drop-off point for buses, that is all on the, that's all on the docket for conversations. Sure. Okay, I think we worked our way through the questions. I will be around closing down, picking up, picking up shop here a little bit along with the rest of us. Thank you for coming this evening, excellent questions, again, please contact the school. I'm sure you'll go home and think of other questions. Next Tuesday, I believe, correct, next Tuesday? Next Tuesday, we have another community forum, it will be the same presentation. If you enjoyed this evening and want to, and want to, want to endure another hour and a half of the same conversation, we welcome you back. Or if you have questions, please come back and ask your questions and tell your friends, tell your neighbors that we are offering this on the fourteenth and they will see this again, so, thank you, thank you for your participation and your